Like to call the meeting to order at six o'clock. We're going to stay in for the.
I would like to make this the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First of all, I'd like to thank the. Welcome the new board members and say that we are looking forward to working together with all of you to get our community back on track. But roll call, Donnie Kern available by Zoom. Is that correct?
I'm here.
Donnie is here. Brandon Crute.
Here.
Caleb Garns.
Here.
Josh X.
Here.
Myself here, Chris Marino.
Here.
Chris Dubach. Right, so we have a public comment on agenda items, two minutes per person, fourteen minutes per topic. Public comments, anybody have anything for public comment? The agenda items as you know.
Do you have the agenda?
It's right there. Oh, it's all on.
I just before I start talking, who's got? Who's the timer? And before I start talking, what are the rules?
Well, that's beyond the agenda item.
It's all about the agenda. The village. The Black Village.
Is it about a specific agenda item or is it just a complaint?
It's pretty general in that it's about the village.
Okay.
So if.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, our ordinances state that. That it can only be. A public comment can be limited. Only items that are on the agenda for tonight.
You want out which agenda item, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Cappers, it has to do with. So is the clock starting right now or am I answering that question?
Um.
You can answer the question for the clock, sir.
So it has to do with village.
What agenda item specifically?
I haven't read the agenda items, but it has specifically to do with the village and the village board.
It has to pertain to a certain. So unless you can point to one. Is there anybody else that has something to say?
Yeah, public comment right here on the agenda does not specify it has to be agenda.
It's on agenda, it's on agenda.
We're gonna check the order now.
Anybody else have any comments pertaining to agenda items?
I know that we used to put it on for items only, but then we changed it so people can have something to say. That's not on there, but.
Well, she's on check the agenda. I've lived in this town and village for a quarter century. Some have asked if I have a residence between the low halls and the high school. Um, I've got, I'm, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I've got two events in the village. So I should be able to be heard.
Okay. Two, two minutes, Mr. Sullivan.
So this is a business meeting, I'd say sit up, act like or look like you're interested. But I'm not the sheriff, so. I'll just say, you know, be comfortable. Mike Cappers lives at nine eighty-five Creekside Crossing in Stillwater with three children. He's now, as of this day, usurping the legal rights of a qualified elector in Somerset. The other day someone said Mike's probably the nicest guy in Somerset. And if you believe that, then you'll probably believe right now he's applying for the water repairman job in Stillwater. Mike Cappers is being investigated for election interference, voter fraud, candidacy fraud. He has not met residency required by law, location of immediate family, those kids in Stillwater. Signifies and determines residence. Mike has stated just recently. His own agenda, among other things, is relieving village, village jobs, people within those jobs. From Public Works to the Library Board. As a village board, you must know that any involvement with Mr. Cappers on board business. Right now is contaminated with open investigations by the State's Attorney General, St. Craig County, Washington County. These are open investigations and the village board must accept responsibility and ask them to sit down until a legal decision qualifies this election. So I'm asking you right now. As a, as a. Citizen, will you recuse yourself from this board meeting so that usual business, legal business can continue?
There's no, no discussion on public comment.
Could you explain why you vied about your current living arrangements?
In your opinion.
A minute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, anybody else have public comment? Michael?
Michael Larry, one twenty Ebo Street. Um, I'm sorry, I, because I did not see it in the agenda. I understand, um. A lot by, aside the library between sportsmen's and a tattoo parlor, there has been some interest in that. I'm just speaking on behalf of the gap committee on asking when that is going to be on the agenda for discussion. That's my only question.
I cannot speak to that.
And congratulations, all the new people. I'm usually the only one here.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Right, public comment closed. You guys can go through the minutes. It was here for most of them, but I'm just gonna sit back and listen and you guys wanna make sure everything that the correctness of the minutes.
I have one correction that needs to be made in the. The working session.
Which one?
The four eleven working session minutes under public comment. Where on this, I believe it's the, one second, I'll pull it up here. It's the. I had it up and then I got an email. Second. It says. Under public comment. Believe it's the second, second or third sentence where it says Scott Gates commented on the previous meeting, Roberts rules and how the meeting had not. Been properly adjourned. I think it is the, the actual, it should read, in his opinion, the meeting had not been actually properly adjourned. Because that's what he said, in his opinion, it had not been properly adjourned.
That was the comment. That was the comment. And then, and then the next sentence is attorney help, he said it's not an agenda item, so there is.
Yep. I just wanted for the record to reflect that it says that what, what he actually said is that in his opinion, it had not been properly adjourned.
So technically, I made a motion to approve the minutes as written for March twenty first, twenty twenty-three for regular minute, meeting minutes, April eleventh, point twenty-three for discussing meeting minutes and. March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three and eleven, I'm sorry, April eleven, twenty twenty-three for the work session minutes.
Brandon Crone second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? I make a motion to move up new business items so that we can make appointments out of the way, specifically letters A, F, and G. Then finish new business before moving on to the committee reports. Is there a second?
Donnie Kern second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? As far as a new business for discussion, possible approval on committee appointments, I'd like to appoint most important committees first so we can get ready for next month's meeting. Then table the remaining committees until next month, until we have time to see if we're still interested in being actively involved in these committees. I know they're by the village president appointments, but there needs to be a majority vote to pass. Like to make a motion for pro tem, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donnie Kern as president pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I guess the only discussion I would have is, are there any concerns with him running pro tem on over Zoom? It's nothing for me. Anybody else have an issue with that? Does my own comment? All in favor?
I.
I.
Be opposed? Motion carries.
For the record, I abstain.
Uh, bring on the public safety committee, like to make a motion to appoint Chris Dubach as public safety chair. And then still have Chris Marino and Jack, Josh Heck continue to assist. And I've spoken with trustee Marino and received his blessing on this. Is that correct? Is there a second?
Donnie Kern second.
Any discussion?
I understand it. I understand you said that Chris Marino had given anything on that, is that?
He given it, we had to have a discussion and he gave a blessing on that, yes, that's correct. Fair to say?
Yeah.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see, for. Public Works. I'd like to continue, I'd like to make a motion to keep Donnie Kern as chairperson. Brandon Crone as trustee on Public Works and add Caleb Garn to Public Works. Is there a second?
Donnie Kern? Oh, sorry.
Any discussions? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mike, that week commission isn't be done till December.
What's up?
Mike Benz doesn't be done till December.
Yeah, yeah, we'll table, we'll table.
Till December, yeah.
Pretty much everything else, so.
Well, we need to make sure we have enough people in the planning commission because we have that meeting on the fourth, we have to inform, and then we need to make sure we have the. So everybody that's there term will be on it, right? Except for Dave and. Except for Dave, because he needs to be.
Well, I think we're still finding a table until next month, but we still have a quorum.
Okay, and then the board of review, and that's not on there, okay, good, okay.
Just to make it easy, I'll make a motion to table the planning commission until next month, the board of zoning and appeals until next month. The border review, the police review board, and the fire and rescue commission along with. Library Board and Economic Development Advisory Committee and the Main Street Loan Committee until next month where we'd have time to. Make sure everybody is still on board and interested in it.
Okay, so. We're gonna keep everybody in the border view that's there though until next.
Till next month.
Because we have that meeting on the first.
All the rest of the committees next month. Is there a second?
Josh.
Just as a reminder then, Josh, Chris Marino, and Mike, May first, five to seven.
Perfect.
Please do not be late.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries. The. We're gonna table the sewer study, sewer rate study because L is not even attend tonight. Uh, there's been, uh, as far as the continuing, continuation of the workshops, we've had some discussion about that. I'd like to make a motion to go back to committee meetings, at least until things slow down into the winter. Uh, the workshops, I think have been a good idea, but take much longer than expected. Is there a second to going back to?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I believe, uh, there's no, no need for you to make that motion. Because you, as the president, can call the committee of the whole at your discretion, current ordinance allows for us to have committee meetings.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that? Well, I guess I'd like to keep the working sessions just because it is nice to get all of it in one place all at once and then it is helpful so the staff doesn't have to stay after every single night. Um, so the staff has said that they like it. Um, and then all of it seems to make the regular board meetings go a little bit faster when we do have, when everyone's there all together, so. And that'll be my only, any other discussion on that?
I don't quite know what it means.
So normally what we have is we have a plan, plan commissions always kept separate, that's not included in that session. And then there's, but in that work session be the finance, public safety, and public works and. Normally we have a separate night for each one of them. Um, but then it was just best to maybe combine like a work session, so that way. Those people that come public safety doesn't know what's going on at public works. So at the meetings, they're making these motions, but they haven't really heard all the information that they wanted to hear, so.
Moves things along, quarter.
That was the intent, it just didn't work that way.
They just had to keep a timer, I think. But they just, that they felt that it. Made them feel more informed on their decisions, on hearing the whole thing, and so just. That was the reason. Anything else you guys want to add?
And Donnie, I know you said it's not a point of order, it's up to the village president, but I guess. Would it, would it be a good idea, could I take a roll call vote and see who's for and against it?
Yes.
So is that, is a motion, is there a motion on the table or are you just asking for, uh, the, uh, the opinions of the, uh?
I did make a motion to go back to committee meetings instead of the workshop and at least until wintertime, until things slow down.
So he wanted to know if there was, what their consensus was.
Was there a second to that motion?
No.
Well, then I'll, I'll second, oh, go ahead.
Brandon Crone second, motion of gaining consensus. Well, that wasn't the motion, but the motion was to go back to committee meetings. Oh, no, I don't want to do that. I wanna. Is there a second to, is there a second to go back to committee meetings?
Chris Dubach.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I guess then we'll just go through, uh, all in favor.
You got discussed, you got discussion yet?
I'm glued with what I said. Okay, any other discussion?
I'd like to point out, I do like the work section, work sessions, but during the summer, we have some big things coming up, need a lot of time to go through details. So I think it's a good idea temporarily. I'd like to go back if possible.
Anybody else have any discussion?
Hi, Donnie Kern, uh, I'm kind of looking at, we got a lot of construction and a lot of things that are going on. And I think individuals who are interested in a specific, uh, you know, especially the public, if they're interested in a specific. Uh, situation like, uh, they, they want to deal with, uh, come to a meeting about the concerts, they don't want to have to be talking or listening to us discussing. Things that have to do with, uh, uh, construction. If they want to come to construction, they can come to that, but I just think we'd be. Bringing our residents through a lot of the meeting. Uh, you know, a lot, longer meetings than necessary for, uh, specific need, you know, needs that they want their. Their items addressed, that's why I think, uh, I, I think going back for the summer, when we got tubing and concerts and, uh, construction. That it would, it would give them the opportunity to, to attend the meeting specific to what they'd like to attend rather than making them stay throughout the entire meeting. Uh, to find out about something with safety, uh, on public works.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote then, Donnie?
I.
Brandon?
Name.
Caleb?
I.
Josh Eck?
I.
Myself, I.
Chris.
Marino, I.
Chris Dubach?
I.
Motion carries. The, um. Can do E and. I in the same one, um, Felicia. Jermaine has been here for how many years?
Here and I am doing this for twenty.
Has put in her resignation and I think you're done on the eighth.
Yeah.
From retirement, so congratulations to her. Uh, so maybe if I can add I, if we can come up with some kind of a recognition award or some kind of a plaque or. If somebody can kind of head that up.
I can give you something else.
Okay. And then, uh. Can we put like a dollar amount on that, Donnie, or how do you think we could do that?
I don't know.
Not Donnie, but yes, you can.
I was, I was gonna say, thank, thank you, Andrea, for bailing me out of that one.
Would anybody like to make a, a motion for a dollar amount towards some kind of a, a ward or plaque or recognition or. Felicia's years of, uh, service to the villages of Somerset?
Well, let me ask, is it, has it been done in the past?
Yeah.
Okay, and so what's the norm on something like that?
Uh, it was a hundred dollars last time.
And when was that, when was last time? Because I know we've dealt with inflation, so.
Twenty-one.
Pardon?
Twenty twenty-one.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to set aside a hundred and fifty dollars towards, uh, is if that's, if that's, you guys think that's sufficient, one fifty?
Wait a second.
Chris Marino, second. Any discussion? And then Chris Dubach, you'll head it up. All in favor?
I.
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 Motion carries. And, um, on that, uh, at the work session on the eleventh, it put out a job posting for the new, uh, for the new clerk. Um, I asked Andrea if we could extend it to May fourth, I think it was, you added us the April twenty-sixth. I asked her to extend that to May fourth, that'll give it more time to get, uh, quality applicants in. And then it'll give us a few days before the May, Monday, May eighth Personnel and Finance Committee meeting. That worked for everybody, the, the, it's May fourth. And the huge, Andrew, you just put that on the Facebook today. All right, moving on to, uh, discussion, possible approval of village attorney services. As most people don't know yet, but, uh, Anders Hellquist put in his resignation, was it this week? This week or a few days ago, uh, last week. So been looking into, uh, new appointments. Some names that, well, name that kept coming up was Baki Norman out of Richmond. Uh, been in discussion with those guys, they sent over a proposal contract, uh, it's in the back of your packet here, but basically. It, it seems too cheap to be true, but, uh, the municipal worker will do it for a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. And, um, they want to do it. To see how much work it's gonna be at first before they would look at doing a flat rate for us. And as of right now, we don't have a village attorney and, and they're, they're local and they're very reputable. And I would like to make a motion to approve Baki Norman, um, proposal, be our new village attorney.
For real, second.
Again, any discussion?
Just one question, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, the hourly rate versus the flat rate. Is that part of this motion or is it just gonna be an hour of the rate versus that contract and, and, uh, the other question, uh, that I have was, is. Is that kind of the one eighty-five, the norm for, um, uh, or is that a little bit on the, on the lower side from, from what we're used to?
I'm not sure.
For, for an hourly rate on, from, from previous attorneys.
Very comparable to what we're paying now. Well.
It says here in those cases of normal, which is three fifteen, two seventy-five.
Anders, Anders didn't have. I, uh, contract at all, and so we didn't know what his billable hourly rate was. Uh, but when I talked to different attorneys and told them how much he was getting paid, they just, they laughed and it sounded like it would be way, much, much cheaper than that. And it would be more of a trial basis to see. How much work we're gonna send them, how much it would cost to see if they want to continue with us or if we want to continue with them.
Thank you for that answer.
Does it say in here that this is just a short-term contract with the zone?
There's no time limit on it. Any further discussion? No, this was a good name that came up, this was actually one of the ones that, uh, I had provided as well. I thought this was a good, good pick. Believes, uh, man believes in law and order, so that's what we need. All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. G, discussion, possible approval, uh, all Kroy inspections as a new building inspector. Uh, see Todd Dolan is here. Part of what I ran on was, was changing some things and I know, I know. People have had their frustrations with our building inspector in the past, along with myself. And I just think it's time to get, uh, get a new perspective and. And, uh, look to change. A lot of, a lot of things to make it a better place. So I'd like to make a motion for all Kroy inspections to be our new building inspector. Um, hold on, before we do that, um, did you talk to Tony at all before you did this? Our current building inspector, Tony? No, it's, it's by village president appointment, so. Yeah, I know, I'm just asking if you talked to him at all. I, uh, if, if we're gonna have a discussion about it, he was here during a meeting. Um, I was not impressed with. With his answers to the board's questions. Um, I did some more research and, and found out he, uh, was a, an electrician for a short time and then, uh. Studied under, worked for like eight months to a year and, um. So can you identify any misses that he's had personally while he's been on the job? It's just, it's under, he's under Mr. Work's still direction and, and I think it's time for a change. Right, well, they can only enforce the ordinances as they're written. And where he's helped us go right this new ordinance. So we can beep up our ordinances, I know he works with, uh. The other builders, he has a working relationship with them, he's working with us to get Aspen Street fixed. Um, I went on ride along with him and I watched him go through a capstone house and pick apart stuff. So I would suggest that you go along with him on an inspection before you just fire him. Without even talking to him at all, because we have engaged him and he has, and he is making positive change. In the right direction and he's got a good relationship with the builders, so I would like. Everyone to just reconsider. Mr. Dolan, you, you have a little presentation you could circulate.
Uh. May I hand something out to the board?
Absolutely.
Kind of a.
Oh, yeah, we have one.
Oh, yeah, what are your things?
Is anybody missing something? Kind of resume.
You all have one.
I'll have one. Yeah. Um. We're based out of. Uh we cover. Those palaces for all same. I've been doing this for about twenty years. Uh we have four inspectors, including myself. Three of them are out in the field. And we have one inspector in our office. Um there's licensed as a. UDC construction inspector so that she can answer code questions, help fill up permits, um that kind of stuff as people come into the office. We do have office hours. We're able to come up um into our office in Hudson, which is located at a convenient location right near Menards Home Depot. You know, the lighting place. Uh so it's it's pretty convenient for people to show up. Currently, we cover. The uh. You know, some of the surrounding communities like Thomas St. Joseph. Well, the Thomas Samuel, we have a good contract on their section. Um other than that. Open to any questions or concerns you have or?
I did a little research on all Kroy inspections as well, along with uh I was looking into Tony's resume. Approximately how many territories or townships, cities, villages of Mr. Works did you take over since you've been in business?
I would have to probably sit down and and check on that, but. A couple, probably.
A couple and. Two, three, four, five, several?
Three. Three new style, I guess. Who is Mr. Words?
He was the building inspector that. Prop supposedly sold out to the Tony guy, the electrician, but then. Mr. Word just actually asked people to come here and speak on his behalf. So I I'm not sure how he sold out, but he's still on right now.
Yeah, he is.
Mr. Word, do you have anything to add?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm I'm gonna, I'm driving at the moment um on my way to a building inspector conference in Oshkosh, so let me let me find a safe place to pull over if you give me a second. Okay, um yes, this is Brian. I've uh been the building inspector in Somerset for almost thirty years. Uh we've been working on improving your ordinances like the gentleman was talking about. Uh the complaints that we've gotten have more to do with. Our lack of of good ordinances in place. Uh for the the type of complaints that we've had, so. Um I don't know what issues we've had. Uh. Mr. Cappers and I, I know he built some stairs and I went and looked at him and asked him to. Put some handrails on them. I don't know what. What uh. What exactly? Uh you had a problem with uh Mr. Cappers?
Uh Mr. Word, if I read through the ordinances correctly, it said uh that. The building inspector is supposed to be at all the the planning commission meetings and speaking to planning commission members, they have never seen you at any of their meetings. And the building that I've seen in the last twenty-five years that I've been here. I've been subpar at best and I think it's uh. And I think it's just time for a change and it's it's by uh village president appointment. And that's why I, it's nothing personal to you, sir, but I I I just think it's time. It's time for a change. And that's why I'm making a motion to switch to all Kroy inspections. And there's been a second on the table like Chris Marino. Uh any further discussion?
I don't know. No, no, second.
Stay.
Can I can I make a comment on what you just said?
Yes, sir.
Uh when you say subpar. I would ask uh more specifically what code violations. You're speaking of because there are minimum code and that's all I can enforce.
So, Mr. Word, would you say that our minimum codes are? Below where they should be or above or in line?
I'm actually the chairman of the dwelling code council for the state of Wisconsin. I've been appointed by the last five governors. And we're working on that. One of the options that we have is to go to the international residential code. Which is a little stiffer than the Wisconsin code. But those are, that's what we're discussing now at the state level. Um the the municipality cannot create. Building code ordinances more strict than the state.
Mr. Words, if you sold out to Tony, what is your interest in in the the business or the company?
Um that isn't technically a correct ant uh comment. Um. He, I'm training him to take over for me in another two years. So. Uh yes, he is going to take over for me. But he has not bought me out, if that's the term you used.
Good, thank you. I again. Sorry, I thought you seconded the motion, but I make a motion to, part of the platform was changing things up, doing some things differently. And I want to stick by that and continue and. And I think there's a ton of people that would show up right now who are not happy with the homes that have been built here in the last. Twenty years and and they're. People up there raising their hand, they're they're. And I I think we can, I think we can do better and I uh make the motion to Russ to switch to all Kroy inspections. Is there a second?
Chris to back, a second.
Any discussion?
Uh Caleb Gunn, for one. I have to understand a lot more about the history, where we're at, what's going on. Before I would. Give you both occur. This is. Uh new to the board, obviously, so. Based on all comments here, there's a lot to uncover. You can't. If if it's the board's fault, we're not upholding minimum ordinance requirements. That's no fault of the inspector. Right?
Right. Which is, that's what we've kind of have come to discover because I was kind of initially when we first had issues on Aspen Drive, I called up Tony and I was like, what the hell, you're not doing your job. Basically said, well, I have to enforce the code as it's written, and that's why. Like the ordinance we have working on today is saying before they can have a cert certificate of occupancy, we need double check the grade and all that stuff. That's what we need to do as a board so that then the inspector can hold them accountable. And the inspector that we have right now has helped us to craft that. Helped us to craft this ordinance and given us guidance on that. I'm not saying that they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do that. Um I'm just saying that they have. Tony has gone out of his way to work with me and work with uh the current, the last order to. Trying uh make things right. And we are aware of the issue, the building issues and stuff like that. Um. And this is all part of that.
Yeah, having been involved with some property development and. Uh lots of remodeling of different businesses in my career, the. Builders are going to. Skin the treetops as much as possible. They are going to fight tooth and nail to eat their crusts. At a minimum, it's always a tussle between inspection and builders. I think there's a lot to uncover here before I can. Vote and with any. Level earnest.
I don't. I'd just like to uh make the comment here that, you know, I mean, um we have a, you know. New proposal sitting on the table for uh um. You know, potential uh appointment, but I I I would like to um actually. Ask if we can, if we could table this until we have a little bit more time to uh uh review uh and and see if the commitments. Uh because I I'm concerned also with uh, you know, the current inspector not attending. Uh planning commission meetings, uh especially when, you know, there's there's, you know, going to be a major influx of. You know, houses that have been. That have been built and I know they go to inspect them, but why would they not be there to encourage and 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 uh uh. Educate the planning commission on uh things that are being missed as well. So um yeah, I I kind of leading what Caleb on is. If we could, if we could, you know, hold off on the appointment for uh uh a month to give us a chance to look at at both options. And weigh that out. I think that would make sense for all the all the board members as well. And uh not trying to take anything away from the president, but uh I just think uh we might be, you know. Right, this is the first chance I've had a chance to actually hear from the the other, the new new company or new. New inspector.
And Donnie, I have, if you've noticed, that our building inspector has been coming to our board meetings because I've asked him to do that. I can have him come to the plan commission instead of the board meeting. Because he has been giving you guys updates and reports.
He's, yeah, he's been given reports at the at this board meeting, but he he should probably, I I think it does call that he's supposed to be at the planning commission also, right?
Right. Josh?
Uh I'm actually on board with um Caleb and and Donnie. I'd like to have more information before making the uh a decision.
Chris?
No, I'd like to say, yes.
All right, we'll table it till next month then.
Or we just, just. But if there is a motion already, yeah, so you want to change your mind.
Yeah, I'd like to change my motion to table the. Discussion possible approval of a building inspector until next month's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Way to order, Mr. Chairman. You should have discussion before you, before you call the vote.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those? Motion carries.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next, next month, if you need more information.
Yeah, I'll um I'll probably be giving you a call.
Okay.
I'll call you. To your table. Uh discussion is the Somerset community market fest. Still working on, I know, finishing up the website. Uh it's uh basically going to be a deal where it's the farmer's market. But we're going to try to have it in the village lot by the uh um. Across from my happy place by the library there. I have a car show. It'll be Thursday nights from June fifteenth to the end of September. Uh Thursday from probably from like uh six to eight P M or four to six, four to eight P M. They try to do food trucks and things like that, so just for discussion or it'll be on the agenda in the future. What happens if we sell that lot or something goes in that lot? In between now and then? It would probably take a while for things to, for that property to get sold, I would think. Nothing's been on the village board agenda or the planning commission agenda. But we wouldn't, obviously, we'd have to move it somewhere else. I, we discussed for the. Recognition for years of service for Felicia. Uh discussion. Day, community cleanup with the village board and school board. I've been in contact with Shannon Donnelly. Uh she's going to. Get back to us with a couple of different dates. Um we want to do a. Community wide. Cleanup. Uh I said I'd provide all the garbage bags and then take care of all the all the trash and getting into the dump. Um but start working together with the school board and this board. Hopefully, we can all. Be available that day to to start getting some good P R back to our community.
Don't we do that already? Pick up day?
Yeah.
We already do that. With who's that with? With the school, with the school?
The school, the school, but it's never been with the village board.
Oh, and so, yeah, we provide the bags and everything, you know.
There is also a spot on the website, on our village website, under the um. Down under the. Public works, where you can go down, you can go in there and you can adopt the a street and then you can clean that street. So. Last time I went on there, I think I'm. Myself and then one other street on Meadow were the only two streets out of the entire village. You can also go on there and get your uh adopted fire hydrant for the winter, so.
Yeah, the higher fire hydrant thing was just put on here this last winter, so.
They're going fast. Mine's named Flow. And it's not on the discussion, I don't think, but we're looking, uh we're going to work with the fire department to freshen up all of our fire hydrants. Paint them all nice and bright and shiny red. And then I've talked to a couple of different builders that are looking at. At uh um basically paying for those. Whips or flags that are on. Um just the pressure and everything, so.
Bob, do we got a, do we got a? Bob, do we have a uh um a number or something where we get as far as what what that would cost for ordering those uh um? Those uh basically winter, winter markers, aren't they, for wintertime?
I'll check. I don't have any idea.
Okay.
Yeah, there. Hundred.
Times two hundred, times two hundred and twenty, I think. Yeah, it's like two hundred and twelve fire hydrants or something crazy.
Better check into that. Hope I'm wrong.
Yeah, well.
But not all. Not all the fire. Not all the fire hydrants get them, though. That's, I think really Bob needs to kind of identify the ones, you know, that should not get them due to. Like you said, kids flipping them and stuff like that, right?
Right. Everybody, sorry, that was my bad, sorry. All right, back to uh to committee reports unless I, did I miss anything in there? Under new business, I think we. So, quick trip appointment. Of agent, um Alison Howard.
Josh Eck, I'd like to make a motion to approve Alison Howard as the quick trip appointment of agent. Chris Marino, second.
Any discussion?
What is an appointment of agent?
They, as an agent of a liquor license, they are responsible uh to make sure. That they have at least one bartender on staff, that they uh know that they can only buy from. Reputable retailers and and can follow the rules, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, but if if something goes wrong with the license, it falls on the agent.
Understood.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. All right, did I miss anything else there? I think so here, so back up to community reports, uh public works. Well, first. Item was on, I guess I'll kind of be kind of leading uh for charge on this one. Ordinance amendments. Hope everyone looks at that. Uh we did draft that, on or under did draft that for us. And we did add the little tidbit. I like most of it. The only part that I am kind of against is the trees part of it. Uh like trees are usually covered within like a public, like a builder's doing something, they can put trees in there. And so capstone typically will put one or two trees in automatically. Um. I just worry, especially as a first time home buyer myself recently, where you're trying to keep the cost down as much as possible, to throw in a couple extra trees in there and stuff like that. Uh drive the cost up. And then also just as, you know, a landowner, um I think I should be able to do whatever you want with your property and I don't think anyone should make you have to put trees on there. The the main thrust of this ordinance was really to get. The erosion control um under wraps because we had fifteen months between when the building permit was issued to the end of the. Uh till that time was up where they had to have the lawn. Um and then we're also having issues where we have to drain all our our storm ponds. Um so that was really the main thrust of it. So the the trees kind of got added on as a second thought, which I'm all for trees. I'm not against foods. You know, I hug trees from time to time. Uh but I would like to strike that part of it out of. Out of that. Other than that, I like the rest of it.
Out of that, other than that, I like the rest of it.
I'm sorry, Brandon, but I disagree with you on that, uh, I, I think that this, this is a, the standard ordinance requirements of uh. That is in New Richmond, it's the same language that was pulled from, from New Richmond, and uh the, those same builders are familiar with this type of uh. This type of language, uh, and, and really it's uh, the, I understand what you're saying, but additional cost, but it's an investment not only in uh. That we're asking uh anybody that develops in the area, but it also makes our community much better. Uh, because you have trees, if you look at the, the areas that, that um, that have trees like up uh, you know, up and um. In our area where I live, uh, there's trees all around, all up on Raymond Street. And, and then you look at like areas down on Meadow where they have sporadic trees, uh, in some areas, I, I just think uh. Uh, that it's a good investment for our community, and it, it keeps everybody on the same page with regards to consistency. Of having at least, you know, two trees in, in, in the yard, if you wanna argue or say at least one tree, I'd be willing, willing to do that. You know, or look at something like that as a middle ground, but having something in, in there for uh trees, uh, you know, language. That we, we don't just ignore it, um, that, you know, they, they cut a lot of trees down in this community, and we don't ask them to put some back, you know. It, it's, we're just kinda shooting ourselves in the foot, that's just my opinion.
To move this along, I, I would like to make a motion to get model policy from, I think you said this one came from New Richmond. But model policy from New Richmond, from Woodbury and from Hudson. And maybe River Falls, get model policy and then uh bring it to the public works committee. Meeting for you guys to discuss on Wednesday, May tenth.
So I'd rather the, I would rather just get put in place, and the way this is written, it says the village encourages tree planting, so. I would rather this be in place now because whatever permits we're issuing, it takes, that's when it starts, so any, if this isn't in place. Then they don't have to do any of the sodding and all that, so. I would either move to just keep section thirteen, one, two, three, I uh four C one and re. Go back to the thirteen, one, two, three, one, four, B, um.
We just keep them separate.
Yeah, maybe just keep them separate, separate ordinances so we can pass the sodding now and we can revisit the trees.
Why don't we just uh look at doing the whole works and have that, have that vote?
Yeah, cuz if, if we haven't had this in place until now, what's a couple more weeks gonna change anything?
Well, I know there's two houses going up by my house right now.
So I'll make a motion to adopt a language that provided to us by Anders.
Um, my inner best, I, I just told Chris this too, but there is already um. Planting of trees in the subdivision ordinance, section fourteen dash one dash six eight, where it requires at least one thing.
Is there anything about the sodding?
No, that's what we had to work on, that was the bone.
Like you're worried more about the erosion, right?
That's all, yeah.
Well, not having sod down there, then our ponds get full.
Yeah, and all the black dirt wash.
Cuz before, there was like some ridiculous amount of times too, right, that they had to do it.
Hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
Your whole lawn could be gone from the rain.
She was saying, put this in place now and then we can look at, well, it sounds like we have something for the trees, if you wanna beat that up at a later time.
Absolutely, I, but I'm against any. Mandatory, I would, I would like the, not to be burdensome, if we could, that is one of the. One of the um advantages that builders usually like, we're coming through here.
I just have a question, uh, if we already have that language about tree planting in the ordinance, why isn't it being enforced then?
It's for developments.
So it's not, it's not, it's, it's only for developments, it's not really required then, is that right?
New construction. Is it new destruct, new construction?
So we, we passed this new ordinance and then still put it on the public works agenda for you guys to discuss. At the future meetings, everybody's good with that?
I have a question, this, the last line, this section may be modified at the direction of the building inspector.
Yeah, I had a question on that too, I was gonna bring up as well, um.
Discuss with the building inspector, but not unilaterally, just in these sites, we're gonna change something.
I believe under the dress. He said that what was in place previously, that language was there before and it was.
Brandon, you wanna make a motion, strike me, and then.
Yeah, so Brandon Crowe and I make a motion to update the ordinance, uh, that section three point one dash twenty-three, I four C one. Reads as presented, uh, but I would like the statement, this section may be modified at the direction of the building inspector's strike. From uh the proposal struck, not straight, struck.
He was going second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Propose?
So then are you? Still gonna want a separate ordinance at the public works?
For the trees.
For the trees, even though we have it in.
Yeah, we'll revisit that, let's revisit what our current ordinance is, I think it'd be good to get model policy from three or four different places and then. Pick and choose what works best for.
So, you started that motion. Figure model policy from New Richmond, but Bureau of Health and Miracles, public, for public court meeting, May tenth, but nobody seconded that.
We'll just put it on the uh, meet in the agenda.
No motion.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And I, just one more fact on this, people love talking about ordinance as, as much as I do. Um, I have spoken with Tony about this already, and he's kind of already let um, the builders know that this is coming down the pipe. I spoke with Troy from Gateway, uh, and then also Clay from Overing, just kinda letting them know that this was coming, and I kinda said. Um, if this, if this didn't pass today, could, would you do this already? And they were, um, they had no problem doing it, they said doing this survey and stuff like that was like an extra three hundred bucks, um, and they do it in Minnesota already, so. Uh, it's not a big deal, and it should really do a, um, do a huge service to our community.
And so, so the, the uh, we're, we're at, I appreciate the information on it, Brandon, so what, we're uh. We're asking them to incur an additional cost of about three hundred dollars to do a survey they're okay with. But they, but I'm hearing that they might push back on a couple of trees we implanted in, in, on a, on a lot then, right?
No, I didn't bring that, they said they, they said they were fine with that kinda as well, but.
Okay, alright.
For some standpoint, I just don't think that the government should be telling people what to do with their property as long as it's not causing an issue for everyone else.
Well, we like to make a good community out here too, and uh, if you don't ask them or have them. You know, we're actually holding money out to have them do a grade, and trees do help retain soil as, as much as sod does.
Yep.
If the builders are okay with that, I think we strongly need to look at, um, at adopting uh the, that part of the ordinance as well.
It's gonna be on the next public works, Donnie.
Talk about it at the next one, Donnie, it ain't, it ain't over.
Number two, discussion possible approval amendment, number three, Churchill Road Utilities. Yes, who can speak to this?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Wrong community, Mr. President.
At least I remember your name.
Good evening, Mr. President, Village Board, welcome new members, uh. This was discussed at the workshop, uh, essentially it is a estimated hourly. Amendment to the contract for construction staking and construction oversight. Of the sanitary sewer and the sanitary water that is part of the D O T project. And so, you know, the expense of putting in uh those two municipal utilities is borne by the village. And uh, you know, the uh, the D O T will watch the road and the storm sewer separately, but this is the portion needed. To do the uh, the oversight and the staking for the sewer and water. And it represents at the last meeting, uh, Donnie, you had asked, um. Roughly what that was based on, and that was, it was eight hundred and seventy-five construction observation hours. And a hundred and seventy-five uh staking hours, so essentially. During, during the install of those utilities, it's one and, one and a quarter people. There'll be times we'll have two people out here, quite a bit, and times where we'll be able to be done, public work staff as well.
But you get a quarter of a person.
I don't know if there's any questions at this time, we'd be looking for, you know, you consider approval of this.
Just one question on that.
You're breaking up, we can, yeah.
Difference to us on that.
Can you repeat that, we didn't hear you, you keep breaking up. Hello?
Yeah, I'm in a bad area.
That's why he should.
I didn't catch any.
We'll come back.
I said, I said, I'll just listen, I had a question about the hours about, um, that's gonna be pretty much a full-time person, you said?
Little over a full-time person, there's gonna be times where we're gonna have this, uh, two people out there. And uh, so that, that's what, and then there's, there's also office responsibilities as well, there's a. Shop drawings and things like that that need to be reviewed, and you know, uh, pay requests and, and the like.
Bookkeeping.
Bookkeeping, and the D O T's big on bookkeeping and paperwork, so.
I personally don't know enough about it, we've been. Boat one way or the other, so. This is the.
Like I said, it is estimated hourly, and so we'll track that with, you know. Staff, we can give them some updates, and if it looks like it's gonna track for whatever reason, over or under, we can, we can bring that information, so. As the summer moves on.
We're on amendment three. Brandon Crowe motion uh to approve amendment three Churchill Road Utilities as presented by Chuck.
Chris, real second?
Discussion? All in favor? And I don't, like I said, I don't know enough about it, I'm just gonna stay in, so, mostly there is.
Next on the agenda is change order for, for the wastewater treatment facility. And. For, for those that don't know, the original contract amount was four million sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, to the first three change orders, the actual contract amount was reduced by forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, this amendment will increase the, the contract price to twenty thousand, by twenty thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that's what you're seeking approval on, as a step through the workshop, it was for some, some pump and controls that. Uh, the, the wastewater operator wanted added to them.
Yeah, the one that's burnt out, that we gotta pump out manually. Uh, Brandon Chrome motion to approve, uh, change orders aboard.
Donnie Kern second.
Discussion?
We need to put a moan in there.
The amount of twenty thousand one hundred and seventy-six.
The amount, yes.
Increase.
Thank you.
You wanna amend your motion? We're closing again.
To increase that much.
Amendment to increase my motion to twenty-one, two thousand, twenty-six?
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars six, okay, where's that number at here?
Second, there you are, perfect.
Discussion? All in favor?
What you doing, I know exactly what it's for, I don't know.
Uh, plow purchase, item five, discussion possible approval, plow purchase.
Did I ask if we could table this, just because. Uh, metal plus plow is second version plow that will turn into a, you know, a, a pusher, and it also will alleviate. Um, windrows in front of people's driveways. Our issue that we have is we're gonna lose a wing on the loader, which we use for benching to move snow. Back off of the, the boulder, and there's some concern about losing that. Puts us in a worse situation than having this metal plus, so. We just wanna go back, revisit this, explore some more options, and then bring something back to the board.
Next month, two months, three months? Next month, yeah. Six, discussion possible approval, twenty twenty-three curb and sidewalk improvements.
I'm here with me, uh, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to share my screen.
Give the curves done, Chuck? Got a pot, you got a fitter?
But this is for, it's just, we're seeking your approval of the plant so we can put it out.
Ah, okay.
I think it was that security, but it's insecurity.
Okay, try to.
Well, there it goes.
Are you gonna send me something?
Yeah.
Electronically, so I can put it in the.
Yes, I will do that, thank you. So, this is essentially the, the twenty twenty-three improvement project, um. Just quickly going through it, there's.
Can you zoom in?
Enhance.
Sure.
Enhance.
So these are essentially the areas that we'll be getting, uh. You know, it's kind of an overall view of where the, some sidewalk curb replacement, etcetera is going to occur. Uh, there's some of the details of what we're gonna do, I can skip through those pages, if you want me to go back, I certainly can.
Quick, Chuck, what changed from last year to this year, that's all I needed to know.
So, none of this has changed, uh, you know, subject to. Uh, you know, some tweaking of, you know, additional sidewalk and things, but it's essentially the same project.
Well, there were some things that were, should have been removed because we had them done by a change order to the other contractor, right, because they were safety issues? Has that been?
That's a good point, Donnie, um, there was uh. A couple of areas that were improved last year via change order into a different project, and so those have been excluded from this year's project. So it's the remainder of those areas, mainly Spring Street.
Main Street.
Main Street. So I'll skip over that, here's uh one area that is, um, has been added to the project scope. And this is right on, on Main Street by the cemetery. And uh, essentially what's being removed is that, that center island, okay? It's, it's been a maintenance headache where it's been, it gets hit. And so I might as well put a target on it because there's been lights that have been hit quite frequently.
And they're expensive.
And they're expensive, and they take a long time to replace, and so essentially what. If you recall the intersection, if you're heading east into town, there's a dedicated left turn lane. Uh, that, that island will be removed, and there'll be a dedicated left turn lane now to go. Uh, south into that, that driveway.
What does it cost, it wasn't at like seventy-five thousand dollars or something just to remove that?
Uh, you know, I will bring that estimate to the public, in, to the workshop, we're still working on it, the estimate, so.
I, I have an idea to put up like a hundred dollar sign and stuff like, welcome home as you drive in, instead of that ugly barrel that's there and. Fix all those streetlights and everything like that, and paying seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, certainly, if, if it's okay, we'd like to get it out there as soon as possible, and you know, there's still times to, you know, amend the. The project if that's what the board wanted to do. Or, you know, if you don't prove it tonight, you know, you can push on for a month, but then it's in danger of bleeding into. To next year, we wanna get it on the streets as soon as possible, so, so they can get uh light posts and that sort of thing ordered.
You know, I've been out there taking pictures uh and been in town here for twenty-five years. I think lights only been hit maybe twice in twenty-five years. There's already uh electricity there. There's a concrete footing there, so we could have a nice lighted sign as people come into town. It's either like welcome home or welcome to Somerset or thank you for visiting. Uh something along that, those lines and stay seventy-five thousand dollars. I know uh Donnie talked to Apollo and they don't need it as a turn lane. Well, I mean, you wouldn't save seventy-five thousand dollars. You'd have to buy a sign. Yes.
What should be wrong that much?
Seventy-five thousand per sign?
Yeah, that's what they were giving us for that other sign that.
It would be like a welcome to Somerset, like a green metal sign. That's it would be like two hundred dollars.
Those signs that were gonna be going up are like seventy-nine thousand dollars that there those two they want.
Yeah, I'm I'm definitely not bored spending money we don't have for this. I mean, we can put it in other places. Spruce up the town.
Yeah, I I would guess it's more probably along the lines of twenty-five, thirty thousand. But again, but you know, I can provide that number. I don't think we have it split out at this time. It's all included into the the concrete removals, those items, so. But we could separate that out, like I provided that information and public works next month.
Chuck, were there any other reasons to remove it other than been hit a few times?
Well, again, it's a, you know, primarily a maintenance headache. I know Bob, if you wanna weigh into.
Well, originally when that was put in, Apollo didn't like it because their trucks couldn't turn through the right out of their goal. Um and there's no owners now. They haven't mentioned anything, so. Um but I know that the big trucks can't swing that um to head and back into town if they need to. I think majority of that traffic though does burn left, so.
Donnie, I could be speaking out of turn here, but you did you go up and speak to Apollo?
I did, and they have the there the all the big truck traffic uh goes in uh at that shared driveway down uh where the land bridge uh is. They'd say they barely have any of that uh um that type of uh uh any of that type of stuff uh coming through on that traffic anymore in that in on that driveway.
So if we approve it as is, can we amend it to take this out next?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. We'll have time.
I'm perfectly fine with seeing what, you know, getting this out for bids and uh we can always take a look at pulling that part of the part of the deal if the the rest of the board feels that it's not needed.
Yeah, if it ends up being too spady, then we go with the the sign. Welcome home. You'll uh you'll send us all this stuff so we can look at what part of the.
I wanted to get polished up a little bit, so I mean, it's it's potentially there, but it repeats some cosmetic.
Yeah, this is from last, this was last year, wasn't it?
Well, not not.
Something similar to this, which I don't have that in there.
Not this part. And then also I wanna, it also includes this uh the right turn lane at Spring and Main. Okay? Uh this is what I wanted to show you is um our traffic folks. Just to get your bearings here, um the north is up, so this is Spring Street and this is Main Street, right? And so we're adding a pork chop here in the the south southeast quadrant, okay? Our traffic folks are recommending that that there be a a light here at the crosswalk as well as uh a signal across the way there. So when cars roll up, take here as they sneak forward, they'll still see if the the light's red, green, or yellow, okay? Um Bob and I are of the opinion that you probably get by with just a uh yield sign and save the money of those two extra things. Uh but their logic is I can show you here.
Wait, you figure you're gonna save the yield sign, you're gonna get away from the crosswalk, right?
No, you still have the crosswalk to that, but you won't have the the two extra, one extra one.
On the other side, you.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
I mean, it's not a roundabout. It's a yield sign.
Right. Right.
Right, certainly. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that the village already approved the purchase of the General Sam's Lot at the workshop meeting last week or?
Done.
Any love?
Done.
If you bought it yesterday?
Right.
Right?
So so the logic of why they're recommending a a light be put in there and then across the interchange is because the sightlines aren't the greatest as you're going north on Spring Street and you have the rendezvous there. You know, it's just, it's a little bit, you know, your sightlines aren't the greatest as you're you're into this turn here.
Oh, yeah.
Um but the roads are both twenty-five miles an hour, right? And you know, some of the thought was is you know, we could base bid with those with the lights at the crosswalk as well as across the street there in front of the Holiday. And then alternate bid like a yield sign. And see what the DDU is and see if it's worth the investment of the, you know, the twenty, thirty thousand, whatever it is. So you can make that call once we have bids in hand. Because again, I think, you know, there is some uh, you know, you know, it's always good to have it, you know, more is better and have all this safety stuff, but there is a price, right? I mean, everything was, you know, there's cost benefit here.
As you say, that that pull this up, it would be pretty tough to see anything that'll let us, yeah, you're getting on that.
Yeah, because you'll be, you know, you'll be going right around here, so.
So if we go back to that, I'll just gonna share my thoughts. That's okay. But and that's why you know, it's not maybe necessary. So the traffic's by sports, but we've been turning left, head towards the bridge. And those people see they have a green light, the sportsman traffic's gonna see they have a green light and they're gonna turn. And at what point do you claim I have the right of way? So I felt that yield sign always forces those people to say I have to check and give the right of way to anything coming that way, including that left turning traffic um from sportsmen's heading towards the bridge. Uh because there's a lot of traffic and then if you get one car going to turn and then the other cars going behind them, I don't know that in the in the person in front stops because they don't understand what's going on. And that right right-hand turn traffic isn't allowing those cars to get in. I feel it's gonna be a mess. So I was just you know, explain, maybe push that that stop bar up farther so we can get past the rendezvous if that's possible, then you can see. But then that yield sign too, I feel actually provides a little bit more security just because it's telling those people taking that right-hand turn that you've gotta yield to any traffic coming through here. So that was kind of what we talked about today and I was, you know, when I was like, oh, I don't know if that's necessarily good uh or actually gonna cause problems. Since main, since Main Street is still County Road DB, but we do we have to get anything approved through the county on that we do on Main Street?
Nope. Is there a lot of utilities on that island then? Yeah, you know, because you have all the, you know, the signaling for the pedestrians and everything else, so there's plenty of stuff on there. And, you know, our track overload. You know, our our transportation folks are saying, you know, they're always shooting for the make the shortest walk across the traffic, but you know, they like Bob's idea that, you know, we were gonna explore that idea of shifting that up a little bit, you know, it might link in their walk a couple of feet, but you know.
I was just thinking. I also had some concerns on the cost, so I thought, well, let's kind of, yeah, really increase the the prices. So.
Well, how much more than once? How much is to add one of those lights on your side? It's gotta be what?
I don't know. More and prices on things because.
And they faded.
Yeah.
And we're we're salvaging most of the stuff, but there's just with with the pork chop, we there are, there will be three new additional. And but they're not, fortunately, they don't have, I was originally told that, well, if they're multiple, but we're replacing the big ones. That's like a forty-four week. Um, you know, uh.
Lead time.
Lead time.
But we also, we don't have any, we don't have any worries and.
No, I mean, it'll be a couple of months lead time, it sounds like. So we should be okay uh for this summer. But if, you know, I, we could just change the plans right now to just go totally uh um yield or, you know, we could, we could alter the bid and, you know, see where the prices come in if you wanna ponder it more, but, you know, Bob makes a lot of good points about that.
I think we are, it's worthwhile to to have alternate bid on both. That way you can see it uh kinda like what we did with the bridge, right?
Yeah, if you feel that way, well, go ahead and make a motion, Donnie.
Well, I don't, you know, that's how we're setting it up right now.
So motion?
No, if you're in agreement with uh you know, the plans as presented, I guess we would consider, you know, approving the plans and authorizing us to vote for bids.
You don't need that in a motion?
No, I need that in a motion. I I just thought you were talking about the.
Donnie Kern.
So whatever.
Say that again, Donnie.
I said, Donnie Kern, so move.
Wait a second.
What?
But you proved the plans.
Yeah.
Well, perfect, okay. I got half of it.
Any discussion? I I feel like I don't know enough about it to yet to uh even vote on it, so I'm going to abstain. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? And I just. Okay, so Chris Dubach and I abstain, but motion carries. Right, moving on, we have to discussion possible approval, pit five, soil soil boring proposal. This, Chuck or Bob?
I can. I stopped sharing my screen. I can show it again. Uh, we went on the stick today. So. So essentially, we received uh proposals from Hago and AT. Hago was low. And there was two options essentially uh to provide uh the soil lines we need for the grinder station. And the growing wings improvements. And then alternate two was four more additional down where that future lift station is going to be in ten five. Um I think I can certainly show you the the area in question here.
I kinda looked at this today. So basically with the seconds that are more expensive testing, it's like you just take some additional samples and um a little bit more additional testing for.
Yeah, so so what's gonna happen is growing wings is gonna sit up here, right? And there's some concerns by you know, like the, I heard that there may be uh bedrock in the area. And it's better to know about it beforehand as opposed to get your bids and run into it with the, you know, and then it's change orders and try to figure out a a rock excavation number and the like. So, you know, just to be overly cautious, let's plunk a few holes here. And to see if, you know, if if the plans is contemplated, can proceed that way or if we have to tweak it uh while they're out there, because, you know, most of the cost is in the darn mobilization, getting the big, the big rig out there, yes.
So pretend I'm five and new, and I've been at most of these board meetings, but rowing wings, as I understand it, is kind of like an assisted living facility and they're gonna do three buildings at eight units per building, three, four units, something like that. And right now the village owns this property.
Right.
That's why we care about if there's bedrock.
For our utilities, yeah.
For our utilities.
Yes, because what we're doing right at the, you know, right at the, right at the corner here, we're putting in a manhole. So ultimately this from the growing wings down parent, one eighty. Uh it's gonna pull by gravity. And then we're gonna have a temporary grinder station that's gonna pump it up uphill to the other side of the granger or thirty-five there, so it can flow by gravity to your wastewater plant, right? But what's gonna happen as this area develops, okay? We're gonna put a new regional lift station down here that's gonna serve this entire area as well as has the capability of 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 all of this area south of the interchange, okay? And so that, you know, that this is a, but we can't, you know, it's a significant investment to put that regional, you know, spend that whatever, three, four hundred thousand dollars. You know, put that regional lift station in just to serve growing wings. Because there's just not enough flow that, you know, you'd be pumping it into a four-inch forest man and it would take three months and go on septic on you.
How many acres is that parcel?
I wanna say twenty-five. Is that something? What's parcel?
The whole thing there on the other side of the freeway?
Forty-eight. Oh, the south side, hundred and sixty. Prepared property?
Not the cleared property. Uh where the growing wings is gonna be where the.
Six acres for growing wings out of forty-eight acres.
Forty-eight. And they're right up in the top.
Yeah, tucked up on that now, yeah. Which we were originally guessing that was gonna be green space, but their needs were low, so. Advantage. So present, if there's any more questions on the concept for the whole, you know, pit five in the hole, but that's, that's essentially where we're going. Um hopefully that that temporary lift station will be temporary and and uh, you know, it'll be in for less than a year, but you know what, you'll, you'll have the capability to serve all three buildings. You know, for as long as it means.
When do they break on?
I think they wanna get operational next spring.
They wanna, they wanna be building this year.
And be.
And ready to get this, yeah, or earlier.
Brandon Chrome make a motion to approve the American Engineering Testing Bid with uh go with project two uh total estimate, which has a little bit um further testing than the other ones.
What were your mind in that? For six thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars?
So I think it's sixty-five, is it sixty-five hundred?
Sixty-one forty-five, that AT was sixty-five hundred.
Oh, sixty-one forty-five, sorry.
Donnie Kern second.
Uh up for discussion. So just confirming you're going with HGS services?
Uh, yeah, that's. You said, that's, I'm just looking at you, but you said American.
That was going ahead.
Oh, that's, my my apologies. It's uh it's the low, the low folder was uh Hago Geo-Technical Services.
Oh, Brandon Chrome, I'll amend my motion. Brandon Chrome make a motion to approve Hago Geo-Technical Services uh option two. Uh and what was that? Total, was it sixty-one?
Sixty-one forty-five.
Sixty for sixty-one forty-five.
Just a second, that. And then the motion.
Any discussion? We all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? I don't know enough about it. I'm gonna abstain. Motion carries. And then uh convene the closed session. I know.
Oh, I thought.
I know uh in the past, every board member used to meet in that room, is that's will that be a possibility in the future? So we don't have to kick people out of the boardroom? And there's still like a boardroom table. We can have it for discussion, but.
So is there any way you can do the bills first?
Yeah.
Goes up and then when you guys are done closing it down?
Uh Brandon Chrome make a motion to move the village water and sewer bills up to the next item.
Chris, bring it on second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't see anything out of place on any of these, so Brandon Chrome make a motion to approve the village water and sewer bills.
Donnie Kern second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Right, now we have to convene the closed session, so as of right now unfortunately kick you guys out, but I think in the future we'll try to see if we can use that room again and.
So do I make the motions?
Uh make a motion, I make a motion to convene the closed session.
Go back second.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote, chairman.
Roll call votes, uh, Don.
I.
Brandon, I, Caleb.
Hi.
Josh.
Hi.
Miguel, yes.
Chris, Maria, hi.
Right.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Do it over.
All right. Uh, my capers make a motion to come back into open session. With, uh, there's already been a second, but. You know, any discussion? Uh, all in favor? I oppose, uh, nothing to report coming out of closed session. I make a motion to adjourn. Josh, seconded the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Motion, meaning adjourned at seven fifty P M.
So I need you to sign this one and this one.